Rob, you got a list to go?
I'll do it if you don't mind. I've been taking names down. Mr. Bodden?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Calamano?
Here.
Mr. Bajis? I know he's here. Yep, I know he's here.
He's here.
Ms. Nance?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Gagliardi, I'm sorry, Gio.
I'm here.
Mr. Armquist?
Here.
Mr. Brown? I know you're here, Jer. Mr. McLachlan?
Here.
Mr. Conyer?
Here.
Mr. Wilken?
Here.
Ms. Weiner?
Here.
Mr. Havarti?
Here.
Laverty.
Thank you, Rob.
Sorry for that mispronunciation. I got 14. Oh, Mr. Watkins?
All right.
I saw Mr. Watkins join. Right, is he here?
Yeah.
Dennis, this is Drew. I'm here now.
And Matt Rudikoff just joined too.
Yeah, I got you, Drew.
Okay.
Did I see Mr. Watkins? I thought I saw him pop up.
He's not on, Dennis. Oh, he is. He just got on.
And Matt Rudikoff just joined too. So there you go.
Mr. Rudikoff? Okay. So we're good?
Yep. I just want to say one thing. If you're a guest and I don't see your name, you can rename yourself, or you can send me a chat message and I can rename you. So. All right. So take it away.
Michael?
All right. We got a roll call. We got a roll. Okay, next item up on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And motion?
Please identify yourself, folks.
That was Scott.
Scott McCarthy.
Scott moved it?
Yes.
Who's the second?
John's second it.
Thank you, John.
Okay, all those opposed? Any exemptions? Okay, motion carried. Next up is education and training opportunities. I think we had one in a package for the DEC for the 16th.
We did.
And I just forward to Dennis, the one I got from Hudsonia is doing one on the 17th and it's an hour on speaker environmental review. So it has a brochure Dennis can get it out to everybody. It's the 17th at, I think, 12 to 1. So there are opportunities out there. Okay. Any other training opportunities? All right, moving along to community reports. Anybody have anything going on and they want to bring forward? You're in.
The town of Kingston will start their 8:50 project this month again.
One more time, John. I didn't catch that.
We're gonna start, we're gonna have our first meeting under the virtual website as far as 8:50 on Route 28.
Okay.
It's gonna be on the 15th.
Okay.
Linda Geary just joined us, Dennis.
Thank you.
Okay. But the planning board reports, I do not have any report today. Nor do we have any committee reports now. So we can move along to Dennis.
Well, thank you.
Planning the board.
Thank you, Mr. Calamano. I've got a couple of things. One is, the law has passed, we talked about it a little bit last time relative to solar and the ability of local governments to regulate solar at a particular size. The original proposal from the governor was down to 10 megawatts that they would go through an expedited review process. The revisions that were adopted is 20 megawatts. So just be aware of that fact that that's out there. And that means that they would go through something like an Article 7 proceeding in front of the Public Service Commission. It's gonna be in front of, the EDA is gonna manage that at the state level. You should also be aware that what, the other thing that's happening is, is that they're actually, the state is actually going to go around the state and begin to identify solar sites that are appropriate. The state may actually go through the approval process, the local government, you know, using, going through the early environmental work, et cetera, et cetera, at the local level. And then, once that's done, offer the site to the solar providers. By the way, this also applies to wind as well, wind facilities as well. But just be aware that that's out there. The other one I wanted to talk about is, we're having a number of conversations at the county level, back down to the municipalities and into, and into local zoning and planning boards as it relates to the reopening of the county and the region for restaurants and retail. The governor announced this morning, or I think it may be early this afternoon, that Phase 2 will allow for outdoor dining from restaurants. We do, we have very minimal guidance from the state with respect to this. It's just, there's a mask guidance out there and a distancing guidance that the tables need to be six feet apart. But other than that, we haven't seen any. There's been a huge push from the restaurant community and from the economic development community to figure out a way to allow outdoor dining to take place. And I know a number of municipalities are working on it, including the Village of Ellenville, the City of Kingston, Sorgetes, and also the Town of Marble Town. What we're suggesting is two things. One is, is that there may be an opportunity to look at this from a, from a community standpoint so that it can happen as soon as possible and with as little friction as possible with the local approval processes. To have the zoning enforcement officer look at these and say, as long as there's a decrease in capacity inside the restaurant, that the outside seating, the outdoor seating would have, would be considered accessory as an accessory use. And then the only thing that they would be looking at is health and safety issues, basically safety issues. And then while that process plays out, the community may have the time to think about what it needs to do or what it should do relative to its zoning statutes so that, so that that can take place. There has also been some discussion at the state level to see if there is an executive order that could cement this kind of a process. But we have until, I think, next Tuesday, the county is expected to enter Phase 2. So we would have until next Tuesday to work this out. But I would expect that you're going to see a lot of restaurants moving out, moving out to the extent that they can in their parking areas, on lawns, putting tents up, et cetera. And I just asked local planning board members in this planning board to cognizance of the fact that this is literally a temporary situation and the community can begin to address this as time goes by.
Is the county gonna put a press release out about that?
There is, there has been already been a circulation, Vince, by the county's Economic Development Division and by the Chamber of Commerce of the announcement. So that's already been, and there's been at least three, I think, conference calls with individuals in the restaurant community to discuss about how best to let this happen. A lot of those conference calls have focused on what guidelines are out there. We were hoping we did additional guidelines from the state. We did not. And the other thing it's focused is on is street closures. Been a lot of discussion with respect to street closures, both at the local, what happens with respect to local streets and also what happens as it relates to state roads. Yeah, if you don't mind, something to the effect that hopefully these businesses understand that this is only temporary. It's not meant to be permanent is what I'm getting at as far as the press release. Well, we have no intention at the county level to do that. And the other thing is, is that in some instances, communities may actually want to encourage outdoor dining rather than, and think about how to make it much more permanent through a permitting process and through a safety discussion. The City of Kingston does this already. They have a sidewalk dining section in their statute. And Rob has been doing some work on how other communities have done this, not in relationship to COVID, but also in general, both in terms of Saratoga and Hoboken. What's the other one, Rob, you had?
I was doing Denver and actually Hoboken. They're both instituting processes for, for outdoor dining. One is, they break it up into on lot and completely on private lot and another one, method, how to extend out into the sidewalk and the street in the right of way and different permitting levels on that. So I have like a draft memo that I have together right now.
I'm just asking all this because we have a lot of outdoor seating in the Village of Sorgete, so. You know. We've been in discussion with some of the village board members and the town board members and the restaurant community up there, particularly with respect to, maybe there's a possibility of closing a portion of Route 212 right in front of the main area, say from where the hotel is all the way down to, I forget the name of that street, but through there because you have a built-in, you have a built-in detour. So that's, I just, I also want to say that we've been actively engaged in a number of transportation projects, including the Walker Valley Rail Trail Opportunity Study, which we're, we're looking at going back out to the community to have a conversation about. We've got some existing conditions and design drawings. We're finishing up some wayfinding work in Ellenville. We're also working on a U and D corridor study out in Shandaken, road safety analysis countywide. So the office is extremely busy and I have to compliment staff on the ability to essentially work from home and do, do a substantial amount of good deeds as it relates to trying to get things done and helping out, and helping out all of the individuals and businesses as we go through this process. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the county has, I think there's a press release and it's been on the street now for about, I think, three days. The county has repurposed a portion of its community development block grant funds to establish an emergency rental assistance program. That emergency rental assistance program, we took about $150,000 out of the $300,000 we had left and put it towards emergency rental assistance. We had, we've got an approval, we had a quick turnaround from the state. We've got a design program out there. It's up on RUPCO's website right now. If you go on RUPCO's website and hit Emergency Rental Assistance. It basically provides rent to people that are low and moderate income. We're shooting for people that below 80% and prioritizing at 60% to pay three months of their rent, providing there's a whole series of conditions. And I would say that because of the funding source and the limitations on it, we're not allowed to help people within the City of Kingston. But the City of Kingston has its own funding source, similar funding source, and we're sure that the mayor's indicated that they're also have some priority with respect to rental assistance. So that, we anticipate that we may be able to get the money out on the street by the end of this month. It's gonna be a lottery system. People are gonna come in, submit their applications. We'll see how many we get. We think we can help about 50 people relative to this funding, or 50 households. And then we'll go from there. We're also exploring other sources of funds to do this rental assistance program and have had several conversations with the state about their funding. I want to compliment Bert on getting all of that work done and working through the amendments to the contracts that need to be done. And there's a substantial amount of paperwork that you don't see that goes behind this. So you should be, the board should be aware of that. And that's all I have. Bert, do you have anything? Or Rob? Oh, Bert, how about your ag stuff? Oh, he's probably muted.
He's on mute, Rob.
All right, let me do that.
The visits begin tomorrow. And they'll run through the 23rd.
So we got site visits ongoing right now, or starting tomorrow. And you've got, what, 16 applications, Bert?
Yes, 16 applications, 15 properties, over 620 acres. People growing rice, grains for the East Asian market, health and beauty products, a lot of young organic farmers. It's really a diverse lot. Unbelievable.
Okay, and that's all I've got.
Okay.
Dennis, I have a question in regards to that money from the state. I've been asked by somebody, you might be able to answer that. People who already qualify for Section 8, can they get that?
No.
Okay, just want to report back.
And there's a reason for that because as their, as their income go down, the subsidy from the state, from the federal government goes up.
I figured that.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask regarding the changes with the restaurants and Ellenville, I know was thinking about moving into the street on so-called Restaurant Row in the middle of town on Canal Street. Is that something that has to come to the board?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else, Dennis?
No, I'm good.
Okay. We have nothing on special topics or public comment. So I think.
We have a lot of people in, who are in public tonight who might want to comment tonight, I think.
Okay, you're gonna run that part.
Yeah, sure. I think they, we have, somebody's already raising their hand, so I can, I can allow them to talk. They can identify themselves when they speak. All right.
Hello?
Hello, this is John First. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you. Again, my name is John First. I'm an attorney at Catania, man. And I represent Mark Owen Sanderson. He currently has a project in the town of Lloyd and we'd like to make some comments on the town's proposed PRRD regulations that you guys are reviewing tonight for the Planned Residential Retirement Development District that the town is contemplating. So just briefly, Mr. Sanderson is proposing a mixed-use senior housing development project. He's gonna have independent senior units, an assisted living facility, as well as medical offices. It's on a 53-acre property within the town of Lloyd, just south of the bridge off of 9W on the west side of 9W, across from the shopping plaza. Specifically, the proposal was under the town's existing CCRC regulations, which is the Continuing Care Retirement Community Regulations. Obviously, you know, what my client is proposing involves senior housing. Everyone's gonna be 65 or older. The idea is to have them age in or have a life community plan where they have the independent housing and then as they get older, settle right into the assisted living facility. So the two kind of go hand in hand. So specifically with respect to the PRRD regulations, which are currently proposed, they are planning to replace those, the PRRD regs with the, I'm sorry. They're planning to replace the CCRC regs that are currently on the books with the Planned Residential Retirement District Regulations. So I just want to highlight a couple of things. There's a couple of issues. One, they're in, the proposed PRRD regulations are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan talks about how the, there's gonna be an increase in percentage of seniors. I think it specifically announced that the people over the age of 65 will double in the next 10 years. There's also studies from the Hudson Valley's Patterns for Progress, which talk about how the senior population will be exploding with, within the next few years. So, you know, the idea under the comprehensive plan is to have flexibility, encourage senior housing as opposed to discouraging is our belief. And again, it's a sense of community and there's a symbiotic relationship between this independent senior housing and the assisted living. And according to the town's own comprehensive plan, you know, there's a responsibility to provide housing to all of its residents, including the elderly residents. These PRRD regulations, as you will see, will actually prevent senior housing and not promote it at all. So one of the first reasons, it's very inconsistent with other planned development districts within the town's code. Currently, the town has a PUD and a PRD. The densities under those would yield much higher amounts of units as opposed to the proposed senior housing. For instance, in a, in a PRRD, if it's proposed, we would only get 172 units, which would be the senior housing and the assisted living facility. But under the PUD, which is not senior housing, somebody can come in and propose 543 units without the restrictions as far as age. And under the PRD, somebody could propose 795 units on the same 53 acres without any age restriction. So it's gonna lead to instances where people are going to develop housing for everyone and it's going to exclude senior housing. In addition, the PRRD is, you actually have to subtract out a lot of land before you even get to the calculations, which is not the case for the PUD and the PRD. So really, the idea is it's very inconsistent. What they're proposing now for seniors is inconsistent with what's on the books for everybody else. Another difference is with the setbacks. The setbacks are much, much higher for this proposed PRRD zone with the senior development as opposed to the existing PUD and PRD. I mean, it calls out for 100-foot setbacks, even for the residential, independent, single-family residential homes for the senior housing, which 100-foot setback for a single-family home is unnecessary. In addition, the setback for the assisted living facilities, these commercial structures can be anywhere from 200 to 400 feet. So the problem is, you're gonna be pushing these structures back outside of commercial corridors and closer to strictly single-family residential areas. Again, it's another inconsistency and it goes against promoting senior housing. Finally, we also did an analysis on the existing conditions. If you look at some of the existing assisted living facilities within the town of Lloyd, their average bed counts, we looked at 1, 2, 3, 4, the average bed counts are 29 beds per acre on average. Whereas in this case, for this Planned Residential Retirement Community, they're proposing eight beds per acre. In addition, we looked at some existing residential developments, the single-family homes. On average, the town of Lloyd has about 8.5 units per acre for the three developments we looked at. And in our case, they're only allowing four units per acre. And this was an analysis that was done by Patty Brooks. She's a surveyor. We submitted this information with my letter to the county planning board, which I'm not sure if you all had a cop, a chance to review. But the numbers are there and her analysis is there. One last thing I'd like to mention is the PRRD regulations propose to allow the planning board to reduce the density after the town board has established that number. So an applicant, it's essentially a floating zone what they're proposing. So an applicant has to go to a, a committee before they even get to the town board, who actually then refers it to the planning board, who makes a recommendation to the town board. And then the town board finally decides whether this PRRD is going to fit at this location and what the density is going to be. So after all that, and then you, when you go to the planning board for site plan review, the, the code as written would allow the planning board to further reduce the density, which I think it's outside their jurisdiction. And quite honestly, it would be unfair. And I'm not sure anybody's gonna propose senior housing if they, if there's a chance that the planning board could basically undercut what the town board had already determined. So again, based upon those, those factors, essentially the big issue is the inconsistency. And it's almost really disfavoring senior housing. Instead of promoting senior housing, the way the code is currently written, I don't see how any senior housing could ever be developed in the town of Lloyd. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to raise their hand? Okay, I got a couple here. Just please identify yourself once I let you talk.
Hey, Rob, isn't there a time limit on, on this?
Oh. It's up to the chair.
There you go. Let's, let's move on.
Okay, I got somebody else who. Okay, hang on, sir.
Hi, this is Patty Brooks.
We hear you, Patty.
Thank you, Rob. Again, I understand that you have a lengthy agenda this evening, so I am not going to reiterate everything that John already stated. I just want to say that I do concur with his findings. I do not agree with the legislative findings of the town board saying that the amendments to the zoning code are consistent with the comprehensive plan and existing zoning. I do want to point out one item that, that John did not mention is that right now, the CCRC, the Continuing Care Retirement Community is listed as a special use permit in the town of Lloyd, which makes it, and allowed use with special conditions that are only reviewed by the planning board. The PRRD would be a zoning district, which would require review by both the town board and the planning board. And there was quite a bit of discussion within the committee itself on exactly how that approval process would run, especially if the two boards do not agree with one another on how that should occur. Again, at this point in time, I don't know that a PRRD district is even required in the town because the current Planned Unit Development District will allow all of the uses that one want to see in a life and community. So for those reasons, I would like to reiterate that I agree with everything that Patty said and just make those couple of other minor points and allow you to get on with your meeting.
All right, anyone else? All right.
It's Lisa?
Yep.
From Hurley. I don't know if, I apologize, but there was one matter. I don't know if I can revisit community news?
Sure.
With the chair?
Sure.
There was an article in the Freeman yesterday. The Article 78 brought against the town of Hurley for the Twin Lakes Project was completely dismissed with the exception of the classification of the units and classified under our code. The judge determined that we needed to address what the units were classified as. And the matter was referred to the zoning board today. Monday night, we did a decision for the planning board to refer it to the zoning board for an interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question in regards to the zone meetings. Has anybody heard when the executive order on this one expires?
No.
Okay.
That was quick.
Well, knows the answer, then there's not much to discuss. Okay, Rob? We're gonna start the
Pearl's?
Review. Referal agenda.
Here we go. All right. Tom Sopas.
Any refusals? Okay.
That isn't here, so. All right, this is, I'm gonna share a different screen real quick. So Tom Sopas, this is the former vet on 9W in Port Ewen, right, this parcel right here. And recently, so that building there is going to be demolished and they're gonna be putting in a new bakery café on the parcel. New access. This is just for area variance, so it's here for minimum width variance and minimum lot size variance. And so this is right in Port Ewen. And let me go back to my PowerPoint. And let me go back to my PowerPoint. All right. So, needs a 27-foot variance on lot width and 55% variance on lot size. Again, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Is it? Rob, does it have water and sewer?
Yes, it does. In the hamlet.
Okay.
So, this is the existing conditions here, existing building. This is proposal meets the parking requirements. So, the width and minimum lot size. We looked, we almost, we looked into the possibility of reorient the building because of the context of the corridor. The buildings are closer to street, but there might be some issues with topography and getting their parking at this location. But the plant, when we see for site, site plan review, might have some additional comments on location of the structure. Now, just, we don't have any, our staff doesn't recommend any impact on the actual variances themselves and just makes a requirement of vacation that they should come back for site plan review.
Mike Baden motion to support staff comments.
I'll second it.
All right, guys, we need, we need, we need identifications before you second and vote. Mike did it right, so who's the second?
Me.
John.
John Conyer?
Of course.
Of course. Thanks, John.
Yeah. Say your name, then second.
Okay.
All right.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Motion carried. Next one.
All right, we're in the town of Gardner.
Any recusals? Okay. Is Linda Giri on?
Yeah.
She's had to accuse herself. Never mind.
All right. So, I don't need that. Okay, so this is the Mountain Brow House, this is on 44. And right across the street, there was an existing grow a lot, which they actually currently use for overflow parking or did. And now, they want to formalize that and put in a parking lot at that location. So, let me just go to Ariel on that. So, here we are. This is 44 right here. Route 48, it's not, let me draw. Okay, so Route 44 is here. This is the Mountain Brow House and...
Go the way around, Rob. That's 299.
299.
That's 299. I got it flipped around. Okay, well, anyway, this is the parcel in question, right in there. That's where we're putting the parking lot. As you can see, there's some parking going on there already. Or it was as of that area. Still is. All right. So, what they're going to do, so we have a lot of information. They went through many iterations of the site plan of this parking lot. One thing they did find on site was that it's in the... It's close to a potential timber rattlesnake habitat. So, they have to do some monitoring that they'll have to be doing and some avoidance with respect to as they go through that process. They already know that that's going to be required of them. And again, so here's the parking lot. This is existing conditions. And there we have proposed parking lot landscaping in the middle. And along the sides, they have a two-phase landscaping plan. On the left. So, that's phase, phase one, and that's phase two to landscaping.
We've got lighting for this, Rob?
Yeah, lighting levels are good, all full cutoff LED fixtures. Lighting levels are fine. Even got a crosswalk across 299 here.
DOT and...
And this is DPW access at this point. So, they have to make it a highway work permit from DPW and that is our staff's only comment with respect to this.
So moved. I have a question.
Okay, why don't we move it in second, then?
Why don't we move it first?
Yeah.
Second.
I have a question.
Hi, Gio.
The question is, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Is this parking area for the brew house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
My question is, is there a reason they can't have more parking behind the restaurant on the same side?
Yes. It drops, it drops, it drops down a cliff behind the restaurant.
Oh.
Yeah. They're really, they're really hemmed in in terms of where they can go behind the restaurant or actually to the east of the restaurant. Let me put it that way. Yeah.
Okay.
I have one question. Is the fire department sign off on this?
I don't know why they would, Vince. I mean, it's a parking lot.
Parking lot?
Oh, never mind, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's Lisa. I've been there quite often. What accommodations are they doing for the crosswalk over to the restaurant? I didn't see it.
It's just, it's just a painted crosswalk and our DPW folks are going to have to approve it.
All right, because there's a lot of traffic over there.
Yeah, I suspect that what you're going to see is a whole signage program for that crosswalk, for pedestrian signage, et cetera. So, you'll see that signage. The good news is about it is it's close to the intersection, so people are slowing down and stopping.
Definitely an improvement.
Dennis, Mike Baden?
Yeah.
So, a concern about that, because it's close to the intersection, somebody coming on 4455...
I get it.
Turning onto 299 may not be prepared that there might be somebody crossing. Is there going to be some sort of way to do signage for somebody making a left turn that they, or even a right turn for that matter?
So, I think it's setback far enough, Mike, when you look at it and Rob pulled it up, when it's setback far enough to give people an opportunity to react.
Okay. Okay.
I think DPW has been out there already. Yeah, they have. With that.
I think they wouldn't put it at the intersection because that would cause a problem on 4455. I think that's a smart idea to move it where they have it now so that it does give people a chance to react before getting to the cross. Because I'm thinking, why isn't the crosswalk right at the, at the stop sign? And Mike Baden basically made it clear that it's, and Dennis made it clear that it should be setback a little bit so they have time to react. I agree with that, the plan as it is now.
I'm guessing too that DPW will add some sort of warning signage leading up to it.
Yep.
That will indicate that crosswalk is there.
Yeah, they'll do a, I'm presuming that what we're going to see, and we'll make that comment on the DPW side when we, when we talk to them. That's why it's a recommendation that it should be a full PSAP presentation with respect to what signage's out there for that crosswalk. Okay, any further discussion? You have a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
We have one.
We have one.
I'll second it.
Well, we have that part too.
All right, then, I'm out.
Okay, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
All right.
City of Kingston, any recusals? Okay, Rob.
All right. So, this is a proposal from City Kingston to amend their zoning statute and mixed-use overlay district to include affordable housing provisions similar to what we recommended with respect to the Kingstonian. So, plus materials received. We got the proposed law and we also got feedback from the Kingston planning board. So, front of the law defines affordable dwelling unit as dwelling unit costs no more than 30% of the household gross income at or below 80% of Ulster County median income. And also, they define a qualified affordable housing unit, individual family, the household doesn't exceed 80% of Ulster County median income with adjustment for household size. And one thing we found when we did the math on the Ulster County median income is that it's about $61,000. So, that comes out to be about $49,080%. And then, when you get them down to, you're coming down to $1,100 to $1,200. So, what we're thinking is that we might recommend 60% for rentals to actually be affordable, $1,100 to $1,200 for a family making 80% or say, that's just not affordable. So, we're going to make a comment about that. Moving on, let's see. So, there's new, whole new...
Rob, I think we also said that we were thinking that what we want to do is make, is ask the community to split the numbers between rental units and and homeownership units. So, that on a rental side, what we found in the tri-county housing study was that at 80%, the market can address the 80% itself without any need for essentially either a provision in a statute or density bonuses. And 60% was more, was more of a, where the need, the need actually falls below that. But 60% was more where the, that the market, the market needed a public policy response. The same thing with respect to homeownership. 80% seems a bit tight for asking people to look at how the homeownership operation works. And typically, what we're looking at for homeownership is 100 to 120% of the median, of the median income can be considered affordable on that basis. So, we want to make those, those types of comments.
All right. Moving on, so we have a new affordable housing section. And basically, what it has is five or more housing units proposed, 10% set aside as affordable. And as you know, it's already calculated rent not to exceed 30% of the gross household income. Some typical standards, housing to be dispersed or out and indistinguishable from market rate and design quality appearance and phased in during the build-out coincidentally with the market rate units. That's common and things we like to see in there. Now, then they also replace the mixed use. Actually, let's hang on a second. I'm still in this. And then, there's a couple of other provisions within the affordable housing section. They leave the tenant choice up to the property owner representative's discretion. And then, they have a whole auditing process where they require documentation of income with a yearly review. And the city has the right to audit different landlords. It's like, one of the things that we noticed, which is a little strange, is that the site plan approval is contingent on compliance with the code and they can revoke the site plan. And there's a process for making requests to the city planning board to revoke a site plan. It's difficult to do when you already have a site in place. So, if you're going to revoke something, you might result in kicking everybody out or it just become uninhabitable. We would suggest a different methodology, perhaps fining until it's remedied. Might be a better solution rather than revoking a site plan approval.
The other thing we wanted to talk about briefly is the choice of the tenant is a property owner's quote slash representative discretion. That's, that's a yes. And in other words, the city is not going to say, we want this for first responders, essential workers, et cetera, et cetera. But I think what, one of the things we want to comment on is, is that that discretion is tempered for units that are large enough where this applies that it must meet fair housing standards. They can't discriminate based on, on that. And we want to make sure that that's included in that, in that, in that language.
Right. All right, moving on. Okay, so they replaced the mixed-use overlay district. And what they did is they changed the purpose section of it. Originally, it was mostly for adaptive reuse of existing commercial industrial buildings. That's not even in it now. Now, it's focused on multifamily housing, on mixed income with the pedestrian base and a mixed use. And also encouraging affordable housing, inconsistent with the new affordable housing standards we just went through.
What's the third encouragement, Rob?
That was the third one.
Okay. And it removed that adaptively reusing of existing commercial building.
That's gone. Let me go back. Permitted by rights, they changed this too. You'll recall originally, the argument was that affordable housing was only allowed through adaptive reuse. So, they cleaned this language up here. So, this law is now consistent with the affordable housing policy. So, what they're allowing in a mixed-use overlay district is both adaptive reuses of existing buildings as well as new construction. And they have to be consistent with the purposes of the districts, which is mixed use, mixed income, pedestrian base. So, that's good. And then, development standards, they didn't really change substantially, just some wording and some combination of the language. But I don't have any comment on those. Let's see.
Rob, did you, I'm sorry, Rob, I keep doing. Did you mention the fact that the affordable housing unit is on a percentage basis of number of units?
Percentage basis of number of units?
It's one unit, it's one on 10, it's 10%, am I correct?
Yes, it's 10%, I said that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so moving on, this is the Kingston planning board. And these are their comments back to the common council. So, they agreed that affordable housing should be applied uniformly through the city and mandated and not guidelines. But they also recommended waivers from requirements, which provided the applicant submits documentation showing good cause. They can't meet the provisions for, on a portion of all the units. And the board must approve a waiver stating the reasons for their decision and by supermajority and that they didn't remitrate waivers on projects of more than 30 units. First off, we would say that, and this is, this is their way, this chart here shows the waiver provisions that they're suggesting. We would say that if there is going to be a waiver provision, it shouldn't be for, it should be 10 or less units. If they can do that, I mean, there's not many projects that are going to be 30 or more units in the City Kingston to get to that threshold even. So, the threshold should be a lot lower if they're going to even do the waiver process.
And I think the other thing we said is, is if it's a hardship relative to the way that the building is laid out or something of that nature, then one of the things that we're thinking about is, is that you don't get, if you ask for a waiver from the affordable housing provision, there is a, there's a, there's a dollar amount that's attached to that. Now, what that dollar amount is, we don't know and not, but we're saying that waivers should not be free.
Right.
They should basically cost the developer something relative to that. And that money would go to an escrow account, which would be used for affordable housing elsewhere in the city or improvements to essentially allow that affordable housing to move forward.
Right, so our required mods here are, we recommend using the 60% of AMI for rentals based on calculations and up to 100% for homeownership. And then, again, that waiver provision, waiver should apply to 10 or less units and only related to homeownership, not to rental units. And also, and that the waiver should require a fee such as based on sale price of the house of sale or to sell the lot to go into affordable housing fund or some sort of escrow fund. And also, this law doesn't address projects currently going through review process. They should state whether they're subject to it or not subject to it, but they should be addressed in some way. Advisory comments. Want to congratulate the city on supporting citywide affordable housing. And the last advisory is, for new units, we often see in most statutes, density bonuses granted for construction of affordable housing. So, we'd recommend that the city consider that as an option as well.
So, I think it's not just for new construction. If we're talking about rehabilitation of existing units, existing buildings, we don't think a strict adherence to the density schedule is necessary in order to achieve some of the, some of the benefits of affordable housing. And we're, we'll amend that recommendation to basically say that density bonuses should
Density bonus.
Be considered for that. I also want to say that the congratulations with respect to the city here are not, there's sort of... This is literally, we, we had a, as the board will recall, we had a long and difficult discussion with respect to the, with respect to the mixed-use overlay district. The city went through some mechanizations to get a determination that affordable housing wasn't a provision of that. And one of our recommendations back with the city was to basically make the changes necessary. And I really must congratulate the city and the common council for the work that they've done to at least to put this forward and say, we agree, we think that affordable housing is important and we're going to, we're going to go back to our comprehensive plan and begin to implement it. And it's one of the first changes that they're making to their zoning statute relative to their comprehensive plan, which was adopted. And we really want to say some really important things with respect to that. Okay. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Who's?
I'll second.
I move first. I'll second.
Say your name, please.
Vivian.
Oh, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay. Vivian makes the motion.
Okay.
Who seconded?
I'll second it. Gio will second it.
Thank you. Don't say I.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Any abstentions? Okay. Town of Lloyd, go ahead. Rob?
All right.
Recusals? Any recusals?
Scott McCarthy.
Thanks, Scott.
What's this? Hold on.
It's local law B.
Dennis, Dennis, I have a question pertaining to the town of Lloyd that we're going to be reviewing the next three. I have a question particularly for the one that, um, a few speakers, um, made comments on. I'm not, obviously, I'm only an employee of one of the comments that was made. I'm, I'm involved with the project, but the, but this review is on zoning statute, so I'm at a a loss as to whether I should be recusing myself for, uh, the one that deals with the, uh, the retirement, uh, community stuff. I'm at a loss if I should recuse myself for that one. Yes.
I'm leaning, I'm leaning towards yes, Gio, I am, but it's up to you.
Okay, I, I think, I, I'm not sure if this one's it.
It is, this is, this is it.
If this one's it, I, I, I am going to have to recuse myself just to be safe.
Not a problem, Gio.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, local law B two thousand and twenty. This is a, so we received proposed local law, fully AF. Uh, Plan Board Minutes. Plan Board's comments on proposed changes to zoning code. And recommendations from the Comprehensive Plan Committee and draft, and their draft language. Uh, so what this does is, first thing it does is it repeals what we were talking, what we heard before about the continuing care retirement community, which was a special permitted use. And it allowed for the development of residential dwelling units sixty, for ages sixty-two and up. And remove the, um, remove the use from the TNDO, TNOD and the mixed use overlay districts. It also removed it from a number of other districts you'll see below on the slide, the R two, R one, R one half and R one quarter districts. And it also removed the special permits standards that specifically relate to the CCRCs. And it removed the, uh, it from the dimensional table. So basically stripped it right from the code. Then what the law did is they added some, I went ahead too fast. They added some definitions and, or amended some definitions. And the key phrase they added to a lot of these, which are already there was, uh, multi-room housing is what they added to it. They added that to adult living facility and enriched housing or adult home. They added a new term called new memory care facility, which is basically a unit that deals with Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's and, um, nurse, they added that standard for nursing home. They also changed the definition for dwelling unit, which now basically says that it's a independent, a, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons in that. And then there's another use, which really isn't related to the rest of this, um, code, but a new urgent care facility, which is allowed in the zone, uh, the town where hospital type uses are allowed. So it's things like, it's like an emergency one over on Hurley Avenue. Things of that nature.
But that would be allowed, and they provided the districts that that would be allowed in, Robert?
Yeah, that, that'll come up later. They just defined it here.
They, okay, got you.
So provision, other provisions that they added, which really isn't related to the, um, that portion of use, but they did, uh, upper floor apartments, square footage not to exceed thirty percent of net square footage of the building and seventy percent is to be left for, uh, business uses. And outdoor recreation for apartments we provide. That's not really related to the, uh, rest of the, uh, language.
But it cuts down, it cuts down the number of, of, of upper floor apartments you can put in.
Right, it does. So it's a density provision there. Um, also, let's see. So one thing they did in the HB district is they changed the setback side, the setback. So what you'll see here is says each and total, that means each of the sides and the total of the side yards. So currently they're fifteen feet each side with a total of thirty-five and a twenty foot, five foot rear. Now it's sixty feet with a total of a hundred and twenty in a sixty foot rear. Uh, height was thirty-five, is thirty-five feet. Now it's proposed thirty-five feet in two and a half stories. Uh, and also in the HB zone, maximum building coverage was fifty, now it's proposed to be thirty percent fifty.
So the highway business district, and that's for all uses in the district, right?
Yes. Now, the next thing they did was they added a new PUD called the Plan Residential Retirement Development or the PRRG. And it kind of replaces the special permitting process and adds another layer by having to go through the town board to get a floating zone approved. Uh, has to be on a state or county road or a new road that make, meets town road standards, I believe. Uh, for sixty-two plus, under sixty-two can be be there with exemption for medical conditions. It's a kind of a traditional village design made up of, of all those different types of uses that we, I just, that we talked about in the definition section. Uh, they have to do a pre-application to the town board. And the liaison from the Plan Board and the ZBA with narrative and the conceptual plan. And then the town board can decide whether or not to accept or whether they want to review the application at all. And they send it to the Plan Board for comment. The town board, since it's a flowing zone, is responsible for secret and making a two thirty-nine M referral. And then if that's approved, it goes back to the Plan Board for site plan review. Uh, let's see, so there's an eighteen month sunset clause as well. Plan Board has, cannot, Plan Board can't increase the size of the concept plan, but they can only reduce.
So the sunset clause basically says if you don't do anything in eighteen months, the, the zone goes away?
Yeah. So Plan Board doesn't have any discretion to increase the size of the property, but only to reduce it or keep it the same. All right, moving on. What did I just do? Go back. Okay, so densities, so independent living units. We talked about those are four dwelling units per acre. And enriched housing, adult homes, assisted living facilities, memory care facilities and nursing homes are eight rooms per acre. And those are combined together, but the two together are not to exceed that total of basically. Yeah. Uh, then let's see. Number independent living, then there's another here, number of independent living units shall not exceed fifty percent of the number of rooms in that, in the PRG. Or the number of dwelling units in the underlying zone. Number of single family dwelling, dwelling units not to exceed fifty percent. Uh, it has to have a minimum lots that is twenty-five acres. There's no minimum lot size for the individual units themselves. Setbacks are interesting. So it's a hundred feet from the front of the facing side of the building. And if it exceeds a hundred feet, then they add on for that. So if you have a, you have a hundred and ten feet, then you have to have a hundred and ten foot setback.
So run that by me again. So if it's a hundred, the building, it's a hundred feet to start with, and if the building's more than a hundred feet, it's one foot? It's one foot setback for every additional foot of building?
Yeah, so if you have a two hundred foot building, then you have to have.
A two hundred foot setback?
Yeah. So side yard is a hundred feet plus multiplied by a number of stories. For the side yards, then there's a rear of a hundred, max coverage is.
Multiplied by the number of stories?
Huh?
Multiplied by the number of stories?
Yes.
So if it's two stories, it's two hundred feet?
Yes. Uh, hang on. Tom, you can just go ahead and talk. You don't have to mute yourself.
All right, I was just wondering on that setback, a hundred feet and then one additional for everyone. Is that for the width of the building? Or is that for the, I mean, yeah, the width and the length of the building could be different. So does.
Front facing side, bro. Front facing side.
Oh, front facing side, all right.
All right, uh, where was it? Also, the parking can't be within a hundred feet of adjoining lots within residential use. And there's also one, uh, one third of, of the whole property, of the gross acreage has to be put in conservation even for open space. There's also a provision for calculating the, uh, base density, buildable acreage from steep slopes, wetlands and flood plain. Um, none of the other PUD kind of types standard within the town Lloyd have that calculation in there for them. So wait, then go on, go ahead, Dennis.
It's net building area.
Right, net building area.
Okay.
Yeah, so recommend some sort of consistency on that.
For net buildable area, let me put it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our comments are, one, we think that this type of use, having another layer of bureaucracy to go through and creating a whole new flowing zone when there's a need for, um, housing for seniors, that the special permit process is perfectly adequate for getting the town where it wants to be. And then they can still set whatever density requirements they want for that. At that, that's a discussion that the town can have. But we, we do say that density allowance should be significantly greater than those proposed, given the typical density of these types of uses and and also, let's see, let's see, God. And I also mentioned that the above with the, uh, net buildable area, the density calculation should be the same for all PUD style developments. There's also no purpose section with this law. So we have to have a, with the rezoning, there should be some sort of consistency with the, uh, comprehensive plan. They should state where the power from that or where the consistency said we're going to, what calls for a floating zone, what calls for the reduction in this overall density for that project. And there was no mention of the, of the town's affordable housing statute. And that should be made clear how, uh, affordable housing relates to the PRRG if they're going to go through with this. There should be some understanding of that.
And, and if I can, Rob, I think having looked at this, um, we had discussed this a couple of days ago and then again today. I think we want to make a comment with respect to the setbacks. I mean, these setbacks are extreme.
Yes.
And in, in particular, um, both the side yard and the, one is the setbacks related to the PRD statute itself. The other one is the change in setbacks for the entire HB district. And, and those setbacks, the concern, the concern with the setbacks, I think I understand why they may have done it, but it would be easier just to, to set a, um, a required frontage on a road or required, a required width, uh, but rather than to try to force a setback provision, which is probably very difficult to meet overall. And this is a highway business district or a, or a hamlet business district. So those kinds of setbacks are unusual and, and certainly not where we're trying to, what we're, what we're trying to accomplish with, with respect to both on the side yards and on the rear and on the, uh, and on the total, and on the total amount of setbacks.
Can I, can I add something to that too?
Sure.
So with, with this being senior housing, you, they pretty much eliminated any walkability. Uh, you know, if this were in the hamlet area, because it's a floating district, uh, the, the seniors would be having to walk a significant distance just to get to the street. And, and I think it really needs to relate to the existing setbacks of the, the underlying district first. And then if they feel the need to increase it because of density, then maybe, you know, but the, the hundred feet is the starting point. If this is a thirty-five foot building, it's a hundred and seventy foot side yard. That's, that's insane.
So, um, we, we can make that, add that comment to the PRD section. I, I still want to go back to that HB change that they made as well, which applies to all the uses in the HB district. To have that discussion as well. Those, that a hundred and twenty foot of cumulative setbacks between the two side yards is is substantial. And, and I, I'm not even sure it relates to the, to the density provision in the HB district itself. So we'll, we want to make that comment as well. And the other comment I wanted to add was one related to the the restrictions on upstairs apartments where seventy percent of the upstairs of a building has to be, um, somewhat, um, set aside for business uses. One of the best things, one of the things that we can say is, is that these upstairs, these upstairs buildings and, and second stories are great, are great to think about with respect to housing. And we fought, uh, I think consistently with communities on their main streets to allow residential units in, on the second, on the second floors. And I don't want to see a community sort of say to them, say we only, you can only allow thirty percent of that second floor to be, to be housed. So we want to make that comment as well to say that we think that there should be much more of a relaxation of that second floor housing issue. And then last but not least is there's a sunset revision in the PRD, in the PRD that Rob read, which is that eighteen months. Given what hap, what usually happens with respect to senior facilities, which is certificates of need, the need to go through state approval processes, sometimes design approval, the, the funding sources associated with these. It's, 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 it's punishing to, to say you have to do this in, in eighteen months. I'm not sure what the right timeframe is, but eighteen months seems to be like an awful, after gone through, after going, if, if they're going to leave it in this, in this way, after going through all of that effort, that somehow the zoning changes within eighteen months, if they don't, if they don't make it in. I think we should say that there needs to be an action. I would rather see them, if it, if the town wants to change its mind and rezone it, then I wouldn't suggest that it sunsets after eighteen months, that the town actually has to take an action after, after eighteen months. The town has the ability to, to rescind the zoning after a certain amount of time. But not that, not that it just goes away. Like, I, I mean, this is just sort of reminds me of a subdivision approval, which after sixty-two days, if you don't file the subdivision, it goes away. Eighteen months is a, there's an awful lot of, of fun, of, of expenditure that has to be made in order to get to this, get to that level to have it disappear in eighteen months. I would rather see the board have this denied and just my opinion. Well, I mean, if you look at the required modifications, um, the thought being is, is that what we're trying to do is, is give the community, the community is under some pressure here relative to these types of facilities. I mean, there's at least three or four that I'm aware of. Not necessarily of the exact same ilk, but certainly on the nursing facilities and others in the community. We want to give the community an opportunity to, to, to examine this. And I think if, if we look at this and start to say that we think the special permit process works here. Uh, and we, we basically tell them that, you know, that the density should be similar to the other PRDs and you need to, and you need to essentially move the, move the needle to provide for additional review of these kinds of facilities. I don't think that that's something that we would say no to, but I think one of the things is we don't want to make this to be a poison pill for these kinds of things, these kinds of uses that they just go away because they can't make entry. It would be nice to see the community have an ongoing discussion with, with the project, with project sponsors. And not just perhaps the one that's currently, but others to say, well, what works? Because clearly if you write a, a language, a language in a, in a regulatory fashion and it doesn't work for anybody, you've effectively zoned people out. And that's certainly what we don't want to have happen. And we'll say that, by the way.
Well, this is Vivian. Uh, my comment is that these regulations sound so extreme, especially compared to the existing regulations, that it seems like it's deliberately targeting either of projects that are already being considered or the projects in general, as you said. Uh, and, and I think that it looks like it's calculated for that rather than as part of the comprehensive plan.
Dennis, Mike Baden again. So in our comments back and required modifications, will we explain where we think it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and not just use the the statement that it's inconsistent? Will we, will we give them examples?
The, the correct answer to that is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We had one final comment was that as part of that link to the comprehensive plan, we just, as an advisory was just to look at the available sites. And given that there's a preference for this, for that PRD for have access to municipal water and sewer, to have access to a state or county road, I just wanted them to actually take a hard look and see what sites actually meet the twenty-five acre provision within the town, see what actually works and see if it actually even makes sense on a just mapping comprehensive plan analysis standpoint.
Could we, could we shift that to a required modification? Because I think if they do that and they find how few properties may actually be developable under this statute, they may be surprised. Rather than making advisory, I think they should start with that to see. "Okay, we have this code, how many properties can we develop with this code?"
We can do that?
Yeah, it's a tough analysis to do. And the reason for that is, is that the only real limiting factor here is the 25-acre factor in the statute. The other limiting factors are things that you can't do. But it's, once you got the 25 acres, one would presume that, once you do all these calculations, that you could build it. The question is, can you afford to build it? And does it make economic sense to build it?
Didn't it have to be on a county or state road, or am I confusing that?
I think it does. I'm sorry, my cut is bracked, but I think it does.
Yeah, so that was limited as well.
Yeah.
There's a provision that if they build it to local road standards.
They could build their own road, understood.
Yeah.
Okay, then maybe I'm incorrect. I just thought that if they actually looked at the statute versus the land, they might find that it's a very burdensome law, that they then wouldn't have many properties that would be available. And maybe that's the intention.
Right.
Vivian said, but maybe not.
Well, I might do that, I might do it on my own. It's, for me, doing a little GIS work like that, it's not too hard. So, I might take a hack at it.
You could maybe send that with, I would then say, make an advisory, but if you send that result back to them, it at least gives them a starting point.
Right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve staff comments.
I'll second the motion, Vivian.
Mike still with us? Did we lose Mike?
I don't know. Let's see. No, he's there. Mike, you there? I just unmuted him.
Yeah, I am muted, okay. Somehow I got muted, anyway. So, we have a motion and a second. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
And that was with two recusals.
Yes.
All right, Lloyd. All right, Robert.
Rob, local law, C.
Yes.
I'm abstained still.
All right. Local law, C. So, this is a proposal. We had seen this a while back, but there is a non-conforming billboards law where the town was attempting to.
Rob, sorry to stop you, but we didn't do any recusals.
I'm sorry, thank you.
They did. Anybody recuse?
Scott McCarthy recused.
Thank you. Go ahead now, Rob.
Yep, thanks. So, we got a resolution, local law, and a short EAF for this. Town wants to extend by another 10 years their provision to remove all non-conforming billboards from the town.
So, this is essentially, there was a statute that said you had to remove a non-conforming billboard within 10 years. 10 years has gone by, nobody's removed a billboard. So, now that it's coming due, the town would have to enforce it. So, they're basically saying, "We're going to extend it for another 10 years."
Essentially, what they did was they're repealing the original law, and copy-pasting, and putting it back there. So, effective of.
It's another 10 years.
Another 10 years.
Got it.
So, our required modification with that is pretty straightforward. Town should show consistency with comprehensive plan, and provide a purpose rationale for extending that clause for another 10 years. So.
Gio Gagliardi will make that motion.
Vivian will second.
Thank you, Gio and Vivian. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carried. Next one is Town of Lloyd, any recusals?
Scott McCarthy recused.
Thank you, Scott.
All right. This is the moratorium we saw late last year on all development townwide. It was a six-month moratorium. What they're asking to do is extend it by three months, if necessary, because they've submitted what we reviewed earlier tonight, which was local law B for referral. However, that.
Rob, their submittal to us was specific that said if if they pass, if they pass the PRD, PRRD, then the moratorium would not be extended?
Well, what they said was, "If necessary," and then they followed it up, the fact that they had submitted this local law B to us.
Okay. So, the inference is, is that if local law B goes, if the other local law is okay, then, and they pass it, that the moratorium wouldn't be extended?
Correct. That was my reading of it.
Okay.
So, given, if that is indeed the case, our required modification is, given how broad that extension, the moratorium currently is, that if it's extended, that the moratorium solely related to the conditions of local law B should apply, but all other uses, all their building permits, actions should be exempt from that moratorium, if it's so narrowly focused on just that.
So, if they're willing to eliminate the moratorium if they pass the PRRD, then why should they extend it and have all of these other uses in moratorium, even if they don't pass the PRRD? That's your rationale here?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Mike Baden, motion to approve staff comments.
I have a second. Second.
Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm going to be an abstention.
Okay, you.
Thank you.
You want to abstain, or you want to recuse yourself, Gio?
I'll already, there.
No, I don't need to recuse myself on this one. Well, yeah, I don't know.
I just asked.
I went with the safety, double safety of the abstention.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Switching towns.
Any recusals?
Yeah, Tom, for Poticle, I'm recused.
Thank you.
Okay, this is for both the special permit and the site plan. So, we reviewed use variance a couple of months back. That use variance for this proposal has been adopted. So, now we have a proposed 2-megawatt community solar facility up for a special permit site plan review. It's on 75-acre parcel. They're going to do about 25 acres of the site. The 2-megawatt community solar, as I said. It's split between two zoning districts, BD40 and HR, but one, but irrelevant because those are use variance. Okay. Not in an agricultural district, by the way. So, received quite a bit of information. Two big things that we got were, A, the visual renderings and analysis, and I'll show you that later. But there was no visibility of the project, except for the gate and the Actus Road itself and Route 32. And there was a glare analysis where no off-site glare was indicated. All right, so, I think I went too far. No, I didn't. Okay, so here's the site plan, your two area. And 32 is here. Let me get my annotations up again. There we go. Here's Route 32. Here's your access. It'll need a NISE dot approval of that permit. This is the only location that the project is visible from as well. Two areas, one, two, where you have the solar farms are going to go.
And those are wetlands in there, right, Rob? They avoid these wetlands in here?
Here, there's a wetland here, there's a wetland here.
Yeah.
I have a question. What is impairing the visibility?
It just sits back in the woods.
You'll see it, Vivian. I'm going to show you the visual analysis coming up. So, that's what the proposal looks like. Connections right at 32 for the facility. Stormwater drainage, lots of screening and landscaping. The drainage is going to be screened and landscaped as well. Since it's over five acres, they're going to do in phases. For every five acres, they're going to do a phased stormwater plan.
Scott McCarthy, question. So, the service going back out is underground?
I believe... Not sure about that. It's usually on the poll. I'd have to double-check that.
I would think it would be, I don't think it would be underground, Scott.
Okay.
Well, the solar companies are doing that now.
All right, we can check that for the board. I don't have that set of drawings.
No. I don't have it in there.
We can make an advisory comment on that when we get to the end.
Sure.
Rob, while you're on this plan, before you change, what is that narrow strip of land that it crosses? There's a very.
That's a former right-of-way. I believe it's a former railroad right-of-way, which is part of the property.
It's not a rail trail or anything like that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The old Maybrook line.
Right. So, this is that visual analysis. So, you'll see the pink cameras all over the site plan here, here. These are all the photo locations here. That's the one where we saw the visibility. But as you can see, the whole site is in the woods, and well-screened, and has eight-foot fences around it. So, you're not going to see it from anywhere. So, recommendations are standard stormwater monitoring during construction and post-construction review of that.
And then we have that one we just added with respect to the electric.
And I'll make the electric comment, and also the NISE dot access of 32.
Yep.
Gio Gagliardi, I would like to make that motion and say that I think that these solar farms add some sort of protection to the wetlands, and I like the way that it was laid out.
Mike Baden will second that.
Well, you're Gio and Mike. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mike, I do have one quick question for Rob, though. Is that full parcel totally wooded currently, and they're clearing?
They're clearing.
You got an air photo on that, Rob? Show me your photo.
Did they do any, you know, studies of that area prior to clearing?
Habitat.
Habitat, that's the word I was trying to come up with.
Did you say the bats?
Well, that's what came to mind.
Yeah, they include that. That was a comment that's in there, that they'll be avoiding tree clearing during bat season, yes.
Okay.
So, this is the site now. You see it right here, guys.
Yep. That one.
It's good use of a heavily wetland area.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any recusals?
We had one, Wilkin.
Any opposed, I should say, and then any abstentions?
What do you want first, Mike? You want the opposed first?
I just, yeah, I just asked for opposed, right? Hearing none, and any recusals? Not recusals, any abstentions? Okay, motion carried.
Before we go forward, did you get my vote from before? The moratorium in the Town of Lloyd? Which one? Which one? The extension? Yeah. What was it, Vince? No. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Watkins. Are they solar arrays or solar farms?
Well, I think it's kind of an array that's located on a farm. You can have arrays. I mean, that's a destruction, how many panels you have.
No, but I'm just asking, because I'm trying to get clarification whether it's considered a solar farm or a solar array.
You would have to go back to the zoning statute and look at the definition of solar within that statute, and that would tell you whether it's an array, a farm, or just a solar project.
So, it's individual per town?
That's what I would say, is how the town defines it.
Yeah, Mark, Mike Baden, it's the farm terminology just sort of grew out of the size of these, you know, technically, they're community solar facilities. But people started calling them farms along the way, I think, just as a marketing, is my take on it, and it kind of grew. And I don't know that there's really a definition of a solar farm. I think it's just a nomenclature that people add to them.
Okay, thank you.
Been what I've seen.
Thank you.
Okay. Town of Rosendale, any recusals?
Is Jared Brown?
I mean, he's not on the town board.
Oh, okay, he's good, yep.
All right. Description, okay. So, town-wide solar regulations for the Town of Rosendale. And they define them as minor and major. Basically, the distinction is, anything below 25 kilowatts is minor. Anything greater than that is major. So, your minor uses are rooftop and building-mounted, building-integrated, and freestanding, and ground-mounted. And these are all done basically as accessory, and they just need building permits for them. They have to be screened, they can't be tore. In some cases, then the max height of the zoning district, for freestanding, ground-mounted, on a house, they can't be higher than 16 feet, or 3,000 square foot, the pound is more than 25 kilowatts. And there has to be screening for these things. That's not a county issue, but moving on to major. There are two types of major farms here, and my mouse is going crazy. Okay. So, we have, the one question we have is, we have something called an accessory major collection system or solar farm. And this is allowed via site plan approval in all zoning districts. It's not defined in the statute. And it has the same stats, you'll see a major solar collection system or farm later. It has the same setback provisions, which are 50 feet, and 16 feet max height, and 25 feet setback for fencing, and the same fencing requirements, and the same screening, lighting, and stormwater and signage requirements. The one difference is that the decommissioning plan for these is at the claim board's discretion. And these can occur throughout the town. The major collectors are only allowed in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 different zoning districts, require site plan and special permit approval. But there's also a comment about, for them, they've required decommissioning plan, but then they're only allowed on prime or statewide-important soil if there's no feasible alternative.
You're muted, Rob.
You muted yourself, or just got muted.
Thank you. All right, do you hear me? Okay, so the one thing I, one comment before I go on to the prime and statewide importance portion of it is, I want, we should get some clarification about the accessory major collection systems, and they're not defined in the statute. They're just trying to get an understanding of what their purpose is against the major solar collection farms. So... So, moving on, so, so major farms continue. There's, so if they're do it on a prime soil or statewide-important soil, they have to coordinate with Ulster County Soil and Water Conservation District or Ag and Markets, and have to protect the soil as greatest extent possible. They're not allowing cut and fill in those areas, and structures for overhead lines can't be built on those soils, and roads have to be built along the edges. And they also want all temporary disturbed prime and statewide-important soils to be restored. Just typically, we've made the comment that, while we're very concerned about prime statewide-important soils, we're typically only concerned about them if they're in a state-certified agricultural district. And that's one of the comments we're going to make back. So, here are required modifications. We need, want some clarification and definitions associated with the accessory major.
That's in quotes, right, Rob? Accessory major in quotes?
It should be in quotes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
There's also, and this relates to large-scale, anything in the R1, R2 districts, there's no maximum. As I said earlier, it's a 25-megawatt. there's no maximum, as I said earlier, it's a twenty-five megawatt is, and anything larger. So when those residential districts, the R1, R2, they may want to consider at least playing, placing some sort of maximum uh, size, kilowatt size of those facilities. Or just acreage size up to the town. And then again, with the respect to the, uh, prime soils and statewide soils, they should only limit those regulations that they're saying to those parcels that are in state certified agricultural districts.
So, just, just if I may, uh, when we first started looking at solar farms, uh, New York State Ag and Markets had specific guidance as it relates to solar facilities on statewide, on statewide, soils of statewide importance and prime soils, which was a sort of an avoidance criteria. Um, since the, since they've revised their, their guidance now, um, their guidance is, is, um, similar to what the town of Rosendale is talking about, in that, um, they're saying that, that, that you, you can use them, but you need to be careful if you do. You know, even within a state agricultural district. So the question for the board is, is do you still want to have this, this guidance relative to prime, relative to prime and statewide soils in certain, in state certified agricultural districts? There's a bit of an inconsistency in my mind between what the state's position was versus where it is now. And quite frankly, that the language with respect to state agricultural districts, which basically says that the one thing we want to have happen, that the state has made a commitment in these areas, that agriculture is the thing that we want to have happen.
Dennis, I, I have a question on that, Mike Baden, and Rob, can you go back to that, uh, m- major slide? There's a, there's a word in there that is really bothering.
Which one?
Important soils if no feasible alternative.
Yeah.
How is feasible design, the, defined, and who's getting to define the word feasible? Because I can guarantee you, it's not defined in their zoning code. And if you look at the dictionary, which is usually the next place to to bring it, feasible could mean a lot of things. Is it financially feasible, is it, uh, you know, um, feasible by the amount of work that they would have to do? I just see it being not a very clear, uh, clearly defined section of the statute.
Yeah, Dennis and I talked about that as well, it was really fuzzy.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should recommend, even if it's only an advisory comment, that they think hard about that word feasible in terms of the relation of how it's going to be defined and what it actually means.
So let me ask you a question, Mike, and I, I hear what you're saying, but one of the things we're trying to do with our recommendation is do we really care about prime and statewide soils outside of state certified agricultural districts?
I think we do, uh, the reason I think we do is-
Yeah, you answered my question.
But Burt, Burt is a, is a great resource for this, how many new properties are we getting every time we put this out?
I hear you, okay.
Farms, and if, if we start using up anything that's not currently a farm, we, we, we lose that land.
So what we'll do is, is we'll add to that, we'll add to that comment on the state agricultural districts. We'll add in there and, and clarification on what the term feasible means.
Okay.
For, for areas outside of agricultural districts.
I mean, I would agree with prime farmland if drained, because that's a lot of work, and if you got to drain farmland to make it farmland, then it's not really usable farmland, but you could have prime farmland, that is, or, uh, not in the ag district, that all it takes is the right person to come in and make it a farm.
Yeah, but Mike, they, there's a law in New York State that if you drain the wetlands to make it farmable, as soon as you stop farming it, you have to put the wetlands back.
Oh, yeah, that's true, that's true, good point.
Yep, so it's just, it's just, and a lot of people-
So, so it eliminates itself.
Exactly.
Yeah, good point, Mark, very good point. And then, Rob, I had one more question on the original, the minor.
Sure.
Did they address setbacks at all? Because usually
Yeah, they did, I mean, it's a, it's accustomed to the existing accessory setbacks, which is not closer to-
Okay, it needs accessory setbacks, not, not- Yeah, because, because one thing maybe for, for solar, for, uh, like a building, for a home, they shouldn't have to go for variance.
Right.
So.
Okay. We have a, uh, do we have a motion?
Mike Baden, I'll make the motion.
Mark, Watkins, second.
Thank you, Mike and Mark. Any further discussion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carried. Okay, next one, Rosendale, any recusals?
Right there.
Okay.
Huh? I'm in the meeting.
Alright, uh, let me just get the aerial, so this is a, um, three lot subdivision, which we don't usually see, but we're seeing it because one of the access roads is in a hundred year floodplain. The floodplain is unmapped. So one of the required modifications will be to show it on the map, map that a hundred year floodplain. Uh, let's see if I can actually call it up and show you where this thing is. It's this parcel, but not that one, that one. So it's around, it's a former campground in here, it surrounds this lake in here. And let me go to the site plans, that'll be a lot more telling. Let's see, where's my shares? Hang on. Oh, I just think. Ah, okay.
Alright, Rob?
Uh, something went missing, hang on.
There you go.
Hmm, not quite, hang on. I've got things in my way. Hang on. Alright. Okay, can you, did it?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, good, thanks. Okay, so, going back. Okay, so this was, as I showed you, this is the whole proper in here, and then we'll zoom in a little bit. They have one, two, actually four lots, I should say, not three lots. Uh, so there's a floodplain along the driveway of lot one, so they have to map that, they'll need health department approvals. There's also this new private road that's in there, sorry, my mouse not liking me. Uh, is a going to be ceded to town, so if they that has to be, they'll have to build to the, uh, they'll have to make a showing that it's built to the town standards. And if it's not, they should put in a maintenance district for, um, for that road and for, uh, yeah, for the road itself. So let me go to the required months, so-
Hey, okay, go ahead, keep going, Rob.
Sorry, not, they don't need a stormwater maintenance agreement for this, it's only a three lot. Uh, actually, no, there is a split, so they'll need a stormwater road maintenance and, uh, road maintenance agreements for it. Uh, road if it can be dedicated, town standards, floodplain should be mapped and phoned, sub- subdivision plat, and, uh, health department approval, per septic.
Is there any, any, Robert, they, talk about anything with respect to, uh, access to the lake, any
No, they didn't talk about-
restrictions on cutting trees or anything else around the lakeshore?
Not that I saw.
So maybe what we should do is they, we should add a comment that basically says they should, they should add something on the plat that talks about maintenance of lakeshore vegetation. I don't mind if they go down there and have a dock or something, but I hate, I hate to see them mow the lawn down to the, down to the lakeshore.
I have a question.
Sure.
Gio Gagliardi, I have a question. Um, is there a necessity to dedicate the road to town standards, since it's only three lots? Um, could it be just a shared driveway? Or is that, is, does the code of the town require that to be, uh?
I don't think the town would maintain a shared driveway. So if the town's taking the road, the town would need it to be the town standards, that's generally the language that's in there.
Do we want them to require- do we want them to require that to be a town road and put the burden on the town to maintain it? Or do we want to let the developer just say, hey, look, it's a shared driveway and you guys got to pay for it? Yeah, I, I'm just asking.
Gio, it's, it's totally, if the highway superintendent has the ultimate, the first say on it, so the highway superintendent doesn't want it, it doesn't go to the town board.
Okay.
So my guess is, uh, the town board ultimately has to vote on it, but my guess is that they've already discussed this with the highway superintendent. Because it's a rarity that many highways superintendents these days want more roads.
Yeah, I mean, it, it just seems like a lot for three lots.
Yeah, but the town has, the town has the option to say no.
Lots, I would agree, but for three lots. Okay, I, I will take your word for it.
I'm welcome, I got a question on that, is on lot three, it looks like there's, part of the lot is across the road next to the lake, is that to give it lakefront? Because if you're making a dedicated road, by state law, you could almost call that little piece there that's by itself a, um,
Natural subdivision? Yeah.
And so- Water rights, if that becomes a town road, it could almost give water right, somebody.
Yeah, well, but it also makes what's listed, it's lot three right there, one lake, an individual lot, since they're dedicating the road and it subdivides, uh, what, what they're calling lot three, and also the way that that road does look that they're putting in has no real turnaround, so I would think that they should at least have the fire company look at it and see that they're comfortable with, uh, turning around the vehicle on, on the end of it.
That's good with the highway department.
Yeah, I was just saying, man, a fire department.
Highway by all state will specify.
And Tom, as far as your comment about the natural subdivision, on the map, there should be a land hook.
Yeah, they, they plant it that way. You, Mark's right. The plat would show that it's not, the plat would show that it's not a natural subdivision. So let, let's, let's go back to the comment on, let's go back to the comment on, on the, let's go back to the comment, so Rob, you're saying that the road is to be dedicated, or you're saying that there's an offer session here?
Uh, it sounds like the developer is going to make an offer session.
So let's, let's just say, let's just leave that as, as, as a, um, if there, if there's an offer session, the town should be aware of the standards it's going to require, and then just add in to the fact that, um, I think that, that the point being made with respect to the need to turn around and the length of this, that the local fire company should be involved in terms of uh, the ability to turn, to turn fire equipment around in here.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So if we add those two, we okay?
What about the land hook?
Dennis, okay with that.
What about the land hook?
Uh, the, if it's planted as lot three, I mean, we could certainly ask, basically making sure that the, we could add a comment that basically says that, you know, lot three should not be considered a natural subdivision, and should be still-
Dennis, how about a map note that that piece of lot three can never be further
Yeah, that's what I just said. That's what I just said.
Okay.
Dennis?
It's better with a map note than a land hook.
Yeah, that's what I would think, we'll platter, we'll platter note.
Hey, Dennis?
Yeah.
Doesn't the, uh, uh, road have to be, uh, or, I'm sorry, the town have to adopt the local law by statute dedicating that road?
Uh, there's a continuing offer session would, would basically mean that the town could take it anytime that they want to. That's what it means, so the, the short answer is yes. But then we don't know what the town wants to do, so I wouldn't worry about it.
I mean, could we put like a, a, an advisory that, uh, reminds them that they have to adopt the local law?
The, the towns do this all the time, I don't think we have to remind them.
It, Vince, it's not a local law, the board can accept it just by resolution.
I thought so, yeah.
Yeah, and they don't have to.
They don't have to. So with the comments added, health department, floodplain, uh, the change to that road dedicated, this offer session, the town should establish the standards. And then the thing with respect to, uh, the fire company and turnaround for that, for that road, is that, is that where we're at, guys?
And, and not, lot three map note?
Yep, the plat note, thank you, Tom, uh, Mike.
Don't move, Watkins. Yeah, that's where we're at.
Who, who, who made the motion?
Watkins.
Okay.
McLaughlin seconds.
Okay. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any recu- any, uh, abs- uh, abstentions? Motion carried. Alright, moving on to the village sororities, any recusals?
I'm going to say for the next two village sororities ones, these should have been, uh, exempt from referral, but they made it onto our agenda, this was, they came in too late, I just added them in there.
Do you want, no, no county impact or?
No county impacts, the first one is to reduce dance space, it's an internal modification. They're putting in office space into the building and reducing the dance space in the floor area, and putting in a second door for access to that office space. So.
So moves, Watkins.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, from Watkins, and a second from was it Vince?
That's on both the special permit and the site plan, by the way.
Thank you, guys, we got them.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. A opposed? A abstentions? Okay.
Is, is that for Lighthouse Drive one, two?
No, we're doing it on, no.
Th- th- this one shouldn't have been referred either. Uh, this is a, um, side yard variance for an accessory structure associated with a single family home, no county impact.
I'll move it.
Baden motion.
Who seconded it?
Scott.
Mike Baden.
Okay, Scott. Any, uh, further discussion? Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay. Move on, Rob?
Need a recusal for Ulster, right?
Uh, it's frankly-
Any recusals, town of Ulster?
I'm pushed here.
Thank you, Mr. Anquist.
Hey Dennis, I don't think I made an edit on this slide, did we agree that this next one was actually being no county impacts as well?
Uh.
That's the one at the workshop, which were they reduced in half?
Yeah, I think we did, go through, go, go-
There are some comments, okay, so let me go through it. And I'll, 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 I'll tell you guys about it, so we reviewed this in two thousand seventeen. And let me get to my share, remind you where it is.
It's a four thousand square foot building, right, in two thousand seventeen, and now it's about half that size.
Right, hang on, I got things all over the place on my screen. Alright, so here it is, so this is SCS Tire. As you approach the overpass down Route nine W, there's all these ran there. So this is the, uh, the lot here, originally we had a five thousand square foot, um, building for warehouse and like, uh, to be put in here. The, the site plan lapsed, and now they've come back with a building less than half the size of that. It was an approved site plan, but they never went forward. Uh, and that's why it's, we had had comments about lighting and signage and landscaping the first time, and follow comments, there are no, I don't have any follow comments with that, given that was an approved-
Want to show the site plan, Rob?
Yeah, sure. So there it is. So that warehouse is half, less than half the size of what it was.
You're still on the, uh, ortho.
I'm still, oh, sorry, I had to go back to my share. See it?
Oh, I remember this, yeah.
Yeah. So no county impact on this.
I'll make that motion, Gio Gagliardi will make that-
Baden, second.
Alright, Gio and, and Mike, any further discussion? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carried.
Eric.
Next one. Any recusals?
Anquist here.
Thank you, Frank.
This is out, this is Ulster Catskill Park self-storage. It's on, or Catskill Park self-storage, down Route twenty-eight. Uh, twenty-seven thousand square feet of two hundred and twenty-two self-storage units on an existing gravel pad, meaning there's no disturbances, existing approved nice lot curb cut associated with it. I'll bring up the aerial real quick.
Do that.
So here's your, uh, zoomed in a little bit too tight. But here is your access onto the property here. This is all going to be cleaned up, you have a lot of
Yeah.
junk and tractor trailers, and so this pad in here, this is where it's going to be seen, so you won't be able to see this from the road at all, and you'll let me go to it back to the, uh, presentation. Alright. So. So, let's see. So this is existing-
That's down by, uh, the, the, has station there on twenty-eight?
Correct, has station- Correct. Station is right here. Restore, so this is the restore over in here.
Okay.
So here's your gravel area. We're going to be putting the facility. Away. And that's what it's gonna look like. It's gonna be back in here.
They gotta, they gotta slip on this, Rob, or not? I know it's.
No, there's no disturbance. It's on a already disturbed gravel pad.
Existing gravel pad.
Okay.
If anything, they're cleaning up the site.
I get it.
But we might, we might, given that there is a change and in.
Go back, go back to the gravel pad. Go back to the previous slide. Go back to that's the, their slide. Go back to the development slide.
That, that, what do you mean? That is development slide.
No, go, the next slide.
This slide.
Yeah, that's not the same area.
Yeah, it's a little.
Ah, it's a little bit bigger. Ah, good catch. Good catch.
I think we asked him for.
Actually, well, actually, this, see this here? Let me, let me get a tape for you. This is also a, uh, disturbed area that they say was disturbed in 2016 as well. Gravel grass area as well. This is just the gravel area. This is also part of that area.
I still think we ask them, I don't, I don't have a problem if they don't have to do a slip, but I do have a problem if we don't get some sort of erosion control while they're in there. That's.
Right, and that was the comment I was about to make. Given that they're changing the flow of things, they should do some sort of erosion.
Are they proposing blacktop?
No.
No, it's gonna stay as gravel.
Uh, and then there's no disturbance really.
Uh.
Go to the aerial. That would kind of show you too.
Want me to go back to aerial?
Uh, we're, we're pretty good, I think. I don't think we need to go to the aerial.
Existing pervious and they're not, and they're not going to impervious, then.
I don't know whether it is. That whole section, this section.
You can add it too, Dennis.
I'm going there. This section over here looks like it's outside.
No, I, I get you. You're right. It is bigger, but it's impervious.
I just think we ask them for, um, we ask them.
Certified they're not gonna pave or gravel that area.
If you go to the area. Put it down on something. Yeah, they're gonna put it down on something. I don't know what it is. It's not gravel now. They gotta put it on something.
Well, if you go to the, to, to the.
I don't think it is. We're not asking a lot to do some erosion sediment control on this, on the backside of this.
It's already gravel. It's all gravel.
It's a mess.
Trailers on it and everything else.
Okay, alright. I'm good. Never mind. Alright.
Just gonna move it.
I, I think that, I think you, you make a point. I think, I think as an advisory comment at best, uh, should say that, that this is not going to be paved. It's not gonna be impervious and, you know, that's okay.
Just, just a note, we saw that tree line up there, which was going here. That's that tree line. So that, this is all part of that disturbed area.
So you know they're gonna cut a few trees there.
Alright, uh, let me clear all my drawings. Okay.
Okay. I, I, I will make, I will make an amendment and add to it as an advisory comment to make sure that the, the access area beyond the apparent gravel, uh, limits would remain impervious and that, uh, you know, a limited amount of vegetation would be cut down on the backside where it's encroaching a slight bit. They're telling you no site work.
That's not what they're telling us.
You're using what's existing. There's no site work. You're just putting the buildings on it. But. I would clarify, like, like Dennis said, I would clarify that that is gonna remain impervious.
I think this is, as an advisory comment, that, that the advisory comment would be simple. It'd just simply say that the town should be, the town should be aware that, um, the areas where they're removing, where they're removing some of these facilities may or may not be impervious and it may or may not require erosion and sediment control and that, that should be clarified. That's all.
There you go.
I, I agree with that.
Sounds good. Second.
I'm not done yet, Eric.
Hold on, okay, hold on, hold on. Finish up, Rob.
Thank you. Lighting is good, actually. Uh, we actually have fire department, uh, approval and movement for the site.
I see, I see now.
That's what it looks like.
Oh. So it is visible from Route 28?
That, well, the, um, not, not the, not the units themselves. The units are back over in there, behind those trees.
Behind corridor. Alright.
You wouldn't even see it, really.
Okie doke.
You might see a little edge here.
Little bit. We mean, yeah, you were starting to get into the three towns where everybody's working on that corridor.
What's next? What's next, Rob? So lighting upgrades, landscaping and then?
And then we'll make that comment about.
On erosion and sediment control. Okay, that would, that would not be a required modification. That would be a, uh, advisory.
Rob, Mike Baden, no signage changes?
What's that? No signage changes that I'm aware of. But the existing sign isn't conforming so that if they're gonna, we can make a comment, they're gonna propose new signs, because I don't think they will. That should be conforming to the town standards.
Yeah.
Scott McCarthy here. Lighting, lighting upgrades on the property going to be on poles or are they gonna be on the buildings?
Both. I mean, as you can, you can see right here, I mean, this is, that's not full cutoff. That's not full cutoff. So if they're gonna do full cutoff LEDs in the back, they should make it consistent, the whole site.
Rob?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that the, where that, uh, taxi place is there? Is that?
That is the site.
Uh, just to, as an advisory, maybe have the DEC look at if we're gonna, if they're gonna disturb the ground. Only reason why is because I know for a fact that they have, uh, gas pumps there, uh, on that site. And if they're gonna start disturbing the ground, who knows if anything's leaked into the ground?
Well, they're not planning to disturb the site.
They're not planning on disturbing the ground. We've already established that.
I'm saying if they were. So we've got one advisory comment relative to the, um,
Soil erosion.
Soil erosion, landscaping and lighting upgrades. Okay?
Yeah, I, I don't think they're proposing a science change. We can note if we want.
I would make that motion with those modifications.
Okay.
I'll second it.
That's Vince?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carried. Onto the next one. Any recusals?
Onquist again.
Thank you, Frank.
Alright, Crosspoint Fellowship digital sign. Uh, you'll remember a couple of years back that the town attempted to pass a digital sign legislation. It never, uh, passed, never got put into place. So therefore, what they're trying to do at Fel, the Christian Crosspoint Fellowship is they're directly across the street from former Coleman High School. They're take, they've already taken the sign and put it in place of their sign. It's actually smaller than what they originally had the site plan approval from. It's like 36 feet. It was a 50 square feet that they were approved. So staff thinks it's, uh, no county impacts issue.
Hey, I have a motion.
Move it. Scott McCarthy, second.
Who's the motion?
Vince.
Thanks, Vince.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It's, it's Mike Baden. Um, should we, since there is no legislation on digital signs, should we put any sort of recommendations on intensity or time or duration like we recommend with all other digital signs?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um. Part of me wants to say yes, but the other part of me wants to say is they're using an existing sign. I don't know whether they could meet it. You know, it's, and the sign has been, the sign has been across the road. It's not like it's a, you know what I'm saying, Mike?
It does what we've done in the past with these, like with the fire department in Ulster, is we told them that it had to be static and they should probably only change it like once a day.
Ah, okay.
Rolling, things of that nature. Because the scrolling, the flashing, blinking, that's all prohibited under typical science standards. So we might want to do something that says change.
I, I would vote yes for that. I wouldn't, I would not vote as it stands.
So, okay, so in other words, we, we have a motion and a second for, um, no county impact and now, right? Am I correct? Now we're looking at an amendment that basically said we wanna, we wanna advise the community on the use variance that they should put conditions on the use variance relative to the, the duration of the messages and the intensity of the sign.
Right. That should probably be required mod then.
Required mod.
Weren't there different requirements on schools with regard to digital signs?
I did, that, I don't know whether that's, that's appropriate. I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Were them to move that? Okay, yeah, cuz no, I.
I don't think they're subject to local zoning for the most.
That's a problem.
That's why schools are allowed. So for the church to take it, yeah.
Actually, Dennis, I, I did some research on that. Uh, certain things like signs are, schools are subject to certain aspects. They're not, they're not subject to site plan or things like that. But certain aspects of, of, of improvements are subject to local zoning.
Yeah, intensity, duration, yes.
So that's a required modification and I, I need a motion to amend that, to amend the other motion?
I will make that motion.
So I got Gio and Mike?
Yes.
Mike, you second that?
Yes.
You agree with the amendment?
I do.
Yeah, I made the original motion. I'm okay with it.
Alright. Do you wanna vote on the amendment?
I will concede my motion to.
Okay, the amendment. Let's just go get it over with, folks. Come on, it's late. Um, anybody opposed? Yes, Lisa. Okay. Anybody abstaining? Okay. That's, uh, vote on the, uh, application. Any opposed?
Well, Lisa.
Lisa was.
Any absentions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh.
That's all I got.
And, uh, just a, a courtesy for anybody, uh, I know we're all in our different locations and things come up and we end up talking and all that. Um, we hear everything. Uh, unless you're all muted, we'll hear conversations you have with somebody else. So if you're on the phone or if you're talking to somebody in the house or with you, just take it outside or mute yourself. I'd appreciate it. I have a motion for a German.
I'll make the motion, Drew.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, folks. Thank you all. Rob, nice job.
Thank you.
Great job, Rob.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.